Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Quan Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I will call our June 16th, 2022 meeting to order. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish your quorum?
Yes, Commissioner Mark Fields. Commissioner. Patricia Levitt.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Fan. Commissioner. Will Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Joel Presley. Commissioner William Bryant. Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Yeah.
Commissioner Legina McKnight.
Here.
And Commissioner Sean Atkins, Chairman Atkins.
Present.
Chairman, you have a quorum, and I do believe that William Bryant is on the line as well, so let me check really quickly to allow him to speak because he's on by telephone.
Okay.
I'm asking for him to unmute, but I'm not receiving anything back.
Okay.
But I do see he's here by phone.
Okay, we will need, it looks like Ms. Solomon was able to get on as well. We will need for Ms. Ware to hear his voice so that the record will reflect that Commissioner Bryant is here. Commissioner Bryant, could you please let us know when you're able to unmute? Is he the number nine eight one nine?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that that was his number. Commissioner Bryant, if you can hear our voice, if you would please unmute so that the record may reflect that you are present. Okay. We will, we have a quorum and we will move forward and Commissioner Bryant, and it looks like we've also been joined by Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Fan, could you please unmute and just sound present?
What was happening with this thing? I was on a few minutes ago when you called a roll and that asked me to join in the panelists. What would that happen on the other night? What's happening with this thing? Why, why, why am I not able to get in at first like we used to? I'm asking a question.
Technology is has its own mind sometimes.
All right, all right.
Also, Mr. Also, Mr. Fan, I found out that we get two emails. One email is for general information. And people can join who are not on the, who are not on the commission. And then there's another, another email that goes out says panelists for the Zoom meeting. That's the one you have to use in order to log on.
Okay, well, I'll look for that in the near future. Thank you so very much, Mr. Fields.
All right, yes, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Fields and Commissioner Fan. By the sound of your voice, we will have the record to reflect that you are present as well. Commissioner Bryant, again, we do have a quorum, but when you are able to unmute yourself, if you would please sound present so that the record can reflect that you are present also. Having gone through roll call and established a quorum, this meeting shall be in session. Our next item on the agenda is a moment of silence. And so at this time, I would like to ask all of our participants, our commissioners, our staff, our court reporter, and those who are joining as attendees to please join us in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda commissioners. At this time, I will entertain a moment, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is it a second? It has been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fields. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields that we adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our May 19th, 2020 meeting minutes. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our May 19th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the May 19th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields that we approve our May 19th, 2020 meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our May 19th, 2020 meeting, meeting minutes are approved. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is old business, the William, Willingham corridor study. If Mr. John Tully is present this evening, we will have a presentation by Mr. Tully, and then we will act on this business. Director Smith, is Mr. Tully here this evening?
Mr. Tully is not here this, this evening. He let us know early this week or maybe later this week that he would not be able to attend, but we did confirm him for July. So hopefully he will be able to attend in July.
All right, thank you. That will conclude our old business for this evening, so we'll move to agenda item six, which is new business. We have five cases on new business, which is actually old business because they're deferred cases. But nevertheless, we will hear them again. Our first case is two zero two two U as an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero two. The applicant is Marshall Connor Bryant. Staff, would you please sound the caption for just this agenda item?
Chairman, in reference to item number one, case number twenty twenty-two U dash zero zero one dash zero two. The applicant, Marshall Connor Bryant, property is located at twenty-two eighteen Pinehurst Drive. The applicant seeks a special use permit to install prefabricated structure to be used as a habitable accessory structure. Case type is a special use.
Okay, excellent. And Director Smith, just so that I am clear, these items were deferred from our regularly scheduled April meeting. We did hold public hearings at that time. Have we also advertised for public hearings this evening?
We did not readvertise, so we are, you're welcome to move forward as far as I know, may want to defer to the attorney for that, but we did not readvertise them. We're moving forward via the deferral.
Okay, thank you. I do believe that we are also joined by Ms. Wiggins, our attorney. If you would, please pipe in. I am absolutely open to having a hearing again. There are, okay, just one second, Ms. Wiggins. Commissioner Bryant, could you please sound present or here so that the record may
Correct.
that you're with us.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ware, did you get that? Okay, I can't see Ms. Ware. You got that, Ms. Ware?
I did, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Wiggins, if you would please opine, I'm very happy to hear these again. I think that we've met our legal requirement of holding a public hearing in April. However, if there are any citizens or any other bodies present this evening who would like to speak to these cases, if it is the will of this body, I am open to having a public hearing on these cases this evening. Or comment, I should say, public comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if I understand it correctly, we did have the public hearing on these deferral cases at the last meeting. So you're right, we did meet the statutory requirement to have public hearings. So I would agree with you that we shouldn't open it up for another public hearing, but if you want to take, and I'm hesitant to even say take public comment, which is it achieves the same thing, but it's not the same thing, if you understand. It is just hearing from the public. I don't know, I, I think at this point, my recommendation would for the board to go for with the vote and not public hearings. Or even a public comment, actually, because that legal requirement has already been taken care of and to open it again would seem as if we're trying to circumvent what we've already done.
All right, thank you so very much. Okay, commissioners. You have heard from our attorney, and as I mentioned before, we have had our public hearing on these cases at our regularly scheduled April meeting. And we have met that statutory requirement as just stated by our attorney. At this time, I will have staff to please sound its recommendation. And then after we've heard staff's recommendation, I will then entertain a motion. If there is any additional information that you would like to hear, any comments from the public on this, then you may ask direct questions of the applicant or any person who is present, who can answer or respond to your inquiry. Staff, your recommendation, please.
I'm sorry, and Chairman, in reference to this case, the applicant, Marshall Connor Bryant, the zoning is R one A urban residential. It is a special use permit application, which is seeking to install a prefabricated structure to be used as a habitable accessory structure. The zoning, as you can see here, it stated previously, the zoning is R one A urban residential and is surrounded by urban residential. The future land use map designation is traditional urban neighborhood, as you see on our future land use map. And this is a site plan presented, and you can see that the guest house is located right beside the parking pad. And staff has recommended approval and that the, in the condition is that they must comply with section ten dash twenty-one thirty of the habitable accessory structure portion of our zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Director Smith. Commissioners, you've heard the recommendation from staff, this agenda item two zero two two U is an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero two. It is a special use permit. We're not the final arbiters for special use permit. Any motion that you make should be in the form of a recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we accept staff's recommendation of approval in this case.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields, that this body recommends approval with the condition as stated. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm sorry about that, with conditions as stated.
And Commissioner Joseph Fields, your second still stands, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it is the recommendation of this body, moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields, this body recommends approval. Case number two zero two two U is an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero two. Applicant property at two two one eight Pinehurst Drive, special use permit. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body recommends approval. Thank you. Our next agenda item is two zero two two V as in victory dash zero zero two dash zero three. The applicant is Mr. Harold Buckley. The address is eight seven four Cleveland Avenue. Staff, would you please have the caption for this agenda item?
I'm in reference to item number two, case number twenty twenty-two V dash zero zero two, dash zero three. The applicant Harold Buckley, property located at eight seven five Cleveland Avenue. The applicant seeks a four-part variance to include a driveway variance, an entrance variance, facade finstration variance, and a curb cut variance. Case type is a variance. This case is deferred from the April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-second meeting.
Okay, just so that we can perfect the record, Director Smith, I think you said eight seven five Cleveland Avenue. My agenda says eight seven four.
Eight seven four is correct. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no worries. Okay, and staff, would you please sound your recommendation on this agenda item?
This case is, as stated, the property located at eight seventy-four Cleveland Avenue. It is a variance and the applicant is Harold Buckley. The property has a current zoning as C one M, which is neighborhood commercial, C one, excuse me, neighborhood commercial. And the applicant is seeking a four-part concurrent variance. Next slide, please.
Technical difficulties.
The zoning map, as you see here, the property is on C one neighborhood commercial. Next slide. The future land use designation is redevelopment neighborhood. And the site plan here is shown. Thirty-two hundred square foot. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with conditions to include a landscape plan and lighting plan to show enhanced landscaping around signage resembling renderings provided to staff. Condition number two, base should be composed of masonry brick and stone nature resembling and providing to staff. And additional variance is approved for the Cleveland overlay district.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard staff's recommendation for case number two zero two two V as in victory dash zero zero two dash zero three. This is a concurrent variance. This body is the final arbiter, so your motion needs not to be made in the form of a recommendation. And at this time, I will entertain a motion on this case. Commissioners, let us not all speak at once.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
Case number two zero two two V dash zero zero two dash zero three. Recommend approval of the variance with staff conditions.
Okay, so we don't need a recommendation, so I'm taking it that your motion is to approve.
My motion is to approve with staff's conditions.
Staff's conditions. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Miller. Is there a second?
Second, I have a question though.
Sure, Commissioner Fan. So the motion is to approve the concurrent variance for eight seven four Cleveland Avenue, case number two zero two two V as a Victor as zero zero two dash zero three. Motion is made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Fan, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I have a question, staff. The last condition of the zoning was the overlay district. Explain that to, to us in terms of the Cleveland Avenue corridor, in terms of the overlay district and how that works.
The Cleveland overlay district has certain, certain architectural guidelines, and we just wanted to make sure that the variant is in congruency with that. And once it comes in for site development, staff is going to review the plan based on the Cleveland overlay and all of the architectural designs. So we just wanted to make sure that even though this board may grant the variance, that they would be sure that they, they still are to abide by all of the architectural design guidelines in that overlay district in spite of getting the variance.
Thank you so very much. I just wanted to make sure, so everybody know that there are standards they still have to meet in terms of the project. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, I have a few. Ms. Solomon, can you go back to the slide that displays the conditions, please? Okay, Director Smith, in reading the conditions, you specifically referenced a couple of things. One is number one, the landscape plan, and it indicates that the applicant has provided staff with a landscape plan. Do you have that plan available? And I will ask the same question of number two regarding the, the composition of the, the envelope materials of the building, the building's envelope. Do you have those that you can share with this commission?
Let me check.
While you're looking for that, I do see that Mr. Buckley is on. Mr. Buckley, do you have those handy? If so, are you able to email those in quick fashion to Director Smith? Or would it be quicker for Ms. Solomon to share screen with you so that you may show the commission those things, the landscape plan and the building materials for the building's envelope?
I can share, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. My name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. Here on, on behalf of Romo Pata, the applicant in this case. Mr. Chair, we do not have a detailed landscape plan to share with you at this point. We still have not prepared that. I believe the intent of the, the first condition is to require us to provide that to the staff prior to submitting for permits when we get to that point, but I do have the elevations that I can share with you.
Okay, it's that the intent, Director Smith, is it in fact that staff does not have a plan that has been provided? But the intent is to have the applicant to provide to staff an enhanced landscape plan.
That is correct, sir. We need to reword those two sentences in condition number one and two. The render is to be provided to staff.
Okay, so in that case, because the motion that is currently on the floor is a bit different from that. So in that case, we will need to amend that motion. Mr. Miller, Mr. Fan, Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Fan, as you've heard, let me get, let me get through my last, and then we can go back and clean this up. I believe that condition number three, this is something that I brought to the attention of staff when the case was first presented to the commission, and it has specifically to do with parking. Is that correct?
No, sir. The condition number three is, I mean, it's, it's worded in a, in a way that probably is confusing, but the intent of condition number three is for the applicant to abide by the, all of the, the all of the requirements of the Cleveland overlay.
Okay, all right. So what we have on the floor now is a motion to approve with the conditions as presented by staff. However, now that we've gone through conditions one, two, and three, the totality of those conditions, we're now understanding that we need to do some work with those conditions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So commissioners, we can do this one of two ways. We can either withdraw the motion, and then we can work on these conditions and then establish a new motion with the conditions as they should be. So I can entertain that, but Commissioner Joseph Fields does have his hand raised, and so commissioners, if you think about that, I'm gonna yield the floor to, and recognize Commissioner Fields.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My basic question is, what, what's gonna be placed in this particular area? You know, is it a building or, you know, what kind of building? You know, what is it gonna be used for? What's this space being used for? That's my question.
Okay, what is the use of the building, Mr. Buckley or Director Smith? Is it a bank?
It, it is a bank, Mr. Chair. Currently, the, the existing building on the site is a multi-tenant retail building with only one tenant. The other tenant spaces are vacant. We would like to demolish that building and to replace it with a new Wells Fargo Bank branch.
All right. Okay, well, it seems to me that if it's gonna be a bank, you need, you need more than one entrance and egress for, for access by the public. But you want to get a variance from those requirements, so I'm trying to figure out how that's gonna work. What are you gonna do?
Well, we have already gotten Wells Fargo's approval of the site plan that is before you as well as the elevations. And so Wells Fargo has already, they've already confirmed that they are satisfied with the single access point from Cleveland Avenue.
Okay, Commissioner Fields, is your question more in line is, does the single access point meet the requirements of the city? Is that really your question?
Yes, that's my question.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking, and I believe that those things will get approved as it continues to go through site development areas departments. I think public safety to make sure that there's proper ingress and egress and turning radius and all of those things. Is that correct, Director Smith?
That is correct. It has to go through our technical review committee.
Okay, so those things will be fleshed out if there are challenges or if there's a condition that does not meet the city's requirements.
Okay, thank you, Ali. Are you back?
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
As you have eloquently stated in terms of the conditions, what are we gonna move forward? And I'll read the end of my second, so we can move, so we can move to the motion that needs to be on the floor.
Got you. Thank you. So Commissioner Fan, I will just restate that just so that I am correct and so that the record will reflect that Commissioner Fan has withdrawn his second. Is that correct, Commissioner Fan?
That is correct, Monsieur.
All right. Is there any other second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for this agenda item two zero two two V as in Victor dash zero zero two dash zero three. And it might help us in this process if, Director Smith, do you know if you or anyone on your team has worked on in this meeting, since we've been discussing this, wordsmithing or rewording these conditions so that this body may have a motion and vote on this based on the discussion that we just had?
My recommendation on wordsmithing is to, is to add to be provided to staff at the end of the sentence. Unfortunately, I believe that Ms. Solomon is having some type of technical difficulties and can't retype it on the screen as we speak.
Don't we have a couple of other, other planners that can help her out?
Yeah. Yeah, so could we get Mr. Singletary or Mr. Bush? If you guys have heard our discussion regarding those conditions. Here. I am getting a chat from Commissioner Fields while someone is working on that. Okay, I would like for the record to reflect that we have been joined by Commissioner Mark Fields. Commissioner Mark Fields, could you please unmute so that our court reporter can hear your voice and reflect that you are present this evening? If you would just sound.
Yeah, here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've been joined by Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Fields, we're on case number two zero two two V as in Victor dash zero zero two dash zero three. It's eight seven four Cleveland Avenue. We are in the process of revising some conditions so that we may dispose of this case. If you can put the conditions back up, if someone can. Let's see here. Okay. If we can say separate, as opposed to common additions. To approve, to approve landscape plan and lighting plan to show enhanced landscaping around signage resembling signage. To approve landscape and lighting plan to show enhanced landscaping. Around stuff resembling. To provide landscape plan and lighting plan to show. Okay, number one, who's typing? Ms. Solomon, is that you? Who's typing? Okay, I didn't hear you. I didn't see you. Okay, let's go to number one, Ms. Solomon. That might be easier. Let's say to provide landscape plan and lighting plan to show enhanced landscaping around signage resembling, around signage which shall be approved by staff. And I want to actually word that a little differently. To provide landscape plan and lighting plan, comma, which shall be approved by staff, comma, to show enhanced landscaping around signage.
Okay, so take this, the bottom half off?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go back to the front and you know what? It seems like you're on the microscope, so just relax and we'll get through it. Everything is fine. To provide landscape plan and lighting plan, comma, which shall be approved by staff. Comma. To show enhanced landscaping around signage, period.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Alright, number two, to provide proper documentation reflecting the base should be composed of, okay.
To reflect.
To provide proper documentation. Let's, 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 okay, let's go to the beginning. Building envelope shall include, and we're gonna go back to put I N G on build, so building envelope shall include a mixture of the following building materials. And you can put a colon and we can say masonry and then take all the other stuff out and go to masonry, brick, and natural stone. And do we have percentages or a mixture or? And Mr. Buckley, I'm gonna ask you this question as well. You did say that there is a rendering of the building that has been approved by Wells Fargo. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and that rendering that has been approved by Wells Fargo, what are the building materials?
The building materials are a textured concrete masonry unit material. There is also stucco and metal decorative accent elements.
Okay, before you list all of those, this might be faster. Can you email that to either Ms. Solomon or Director Smith? I would like for this body to have the benefit of seeing the rendering that has been approved by Wells Fargo. Because then we may just reference that rendering versus shooting in the dark, trying to figure out what the building materials would be.
Absolutely, they will have that momentarily.
Okay, this chair.
Yes.
Can we table this matter and come back to it and move forward while they're waiting to get that? Oh, let's table this and then just come back to it while they're working on that information that you're requesting.
Okay, and, and we will also reword condition number three so that it states that it will reflect the requirements of the Cleveland Avenue overlay, reflect and meet all the requirements of the Cleveland overlay district. So I hope that you have that, Ms. Solomon. Okay, we're gonna table this. Go ahead with the motion.
Our motion is to table, and we can get a second and then we'll come back to it.
Absolutely. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Joseph Fields that we table this and come back to this. After we've heard our case at Camp Creek, which is the last case here. Commissioners, our next agenda item is two zero two two U as in umbrella dash zero zero two dash zero one. The applicant is Scott Trimmel. The address is one six six nine Neely Avenue. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item and your recommendation?
Chairman, in reference to case number three. Excuse me, Chairman, in reference to item number three, case number two zero two two U dash zero zero two dash zero one. The applicant, Scott Trimmel, property located at sixteen sixty-nine Neely Avenue. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to convert a garage into a livable loft space. Case type is a special use permit and this item was deferred from the regular meeting on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Chairman, staff has recommended approval and they must comply, condition they must comply with section ten dash twenty-one thirty habit of accessory structure.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've heard staff's recommendation for case number two zero two two U as in umbrella dash zero zero two dash zero one. Applicant Scott Trimmel, as this is a special use permit, this body is not the final arbiter. Your motion shall be in the form of a recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recommend approval of the application.
Is there a second? Back. It's been moved by Commissioner Joseph Field, second by Commissioner Miller, that this body recommends approval of case number two zero two two U as in umbrella dash zero zero two dash zero one. Address is one six six nine Neely Avenue. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound aye. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body recommends approval. Thank you, Mr. Trimmel. Our next agenda item is two zero two two R as in Robert Z as in zero dash zero zero one dash zero three. The applicant is Dr. Ifatayo Ojelade. The address is two five three eight Stone Road. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item and your recommendation?
Chairman, in reference to item number three, case number two zero two two R Z dash zero zero one, that's zero three. Doctor, Doctor Ifatayo is the applicant and the property is located at twenty-five thirty-eight Stone Road. The applicant is seeking a rezoning property, to rezon the property from R L to M I to establish a psychology office. The case type is a rezoning and the applicant has made a request for deferral and staff is recommending deferral as well.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard from staff that the applicant has made a request to defer. Staff is also recommending to defer case number two zero two two R as in Robert Z as in zebra dash zero zero one dash zero three. At this time, I will entertain a motion and before I do that, actually, Director Smith, is there a time certain for the deferral? Is it an indefinite deferral or is it a deferral to our regularly scheduled July meeting?
It is indefinite at this point, sir.
Okay, thank you. This time I entertain a motion. Let us not all speak at once.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation for deferral.
Is there a second?
Seven.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Fan, that this body defers case number two zero two two R as in Robert Z as in zebra dash zero zero one dash zero three. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Question, question, Mr. Chair.
Question.
Commissioner Fan, you have the floor and then we'll go to Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Okay, my question is, is this is a, a deferral, indefinite deferral? What's the difference between indefinite referral and a withdrawal?
Staff, would you like to respond to that or Ms. Wiggins?
I would, I'd rather hear from the attorney. Ms. Wiggins, would you, would you explain that to us, the difference between an indefinite defer and a withdrawal? And in addition to that, would you also let us know how many times a person can defer something before we act on it?
Yes, sir, and I'd let the chairman know I'm at a training right now, so I heard some of your question. And I believe I heard that you wanted to know how many times someone can defer and the difference between an indefinite deferral versus a deferral with some sunset date. Is that accurate?
I mean, not, not, not sunset date, but a withdrawal, what's the difference between a withdrawal and an, and an indefinite deferral?
Certainly, so if someone withdraws their application, they would certainly need to reapply. And we would not treat it as a deferral. We would treat it as a new application of first impression that the, the chair, the board, the commissioners have never heard before and that the staff would need to reevaluate with the new application. Okay, we would need to re-advertize for public hearing. We would start it from scratch like a new case. A deferral, however, would be that we are putting off decision on the application to a later date. Maybe it's to get some more information. Maybe there needs to be some changes done to the staff report. But I will say that there's case law that says that if you have the public hearing like in January and you don't make a decision on the case without having another public hearing, say like in May, that's too far. The public should be heard in a time that's pretty close to the decision so that the board who's ever making the decision hasn't forgotten the inside or the will of the public. So we should not defer, 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 you know, repetitively. So it's to not be in violation of case law.
Because I, I'm just trying to figure out how can we do an indefinite. I think that, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we need to set a time in terms of how long we're gonna defer this case before we hear it again, as opposed to using the word indefinite defer, defer. That's, that's, thank you, Ms. Wiggins for clarification.
Okay. We now hear from Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also concerned about this indefinite request for referral. I was reading the statutes, you know, in the past, and I believe I ran across a section that says a deferral can only be made for thirty days until the next, the next session. So I'm, I'm in a disagreement with an indefinite referral. As a matter of fact, I'd like to make a different motion that we deny the request in the first place because the request for rezoning that one building and trying to make it into, you know, as a district, it's, it's not a district, it's just one house, one building, which I've seen as a matter of fact, it's down the street from where I live. And there's nothing there but that building, which the, the applicant described to us earlier that it was a woodworking shop. You know, it looks like, you know, it's in a residential area. Everything is residential along that section of Stone Road.
Commissioner Fields, if I could, if I could just interrupt you for one second. So we will have to have your comments to speak directly to the motion. And I believe that you're now speaking to the merits of the case and that is why we have to have a motion so that we can keep the comments and the meeting on track. Because then we can go ahead and deliberate this and the motion is not to approve or to deny. The motion is to defer. So we would have to have your comments to speak to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so there is at this moment a motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that this body defers indefinitely. Commissioner Fan has raised some concerns about the indefinite deferral as have Commissioner Fields. And so Commissioner Fan, would you like to withdraw your second?
I'm gonna withdraw my second and I'm going to make a substitute motion, Mr. Chair, if I'm in order.
Okay, so at the moment, the motion does not have a second. And so now I will yield the floor to, I'll recognize Commissioner Fan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I will make a motion to deny this applicant. Application. My motion is to deny.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion. In one second, please. Ms. Wiggins has raised her hand to be recognized. Ms. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just be on notice that a motion to deny could potentially prohibit the applicant from coming back before you for a period of time. So that may not be the intended impact of the motion to deny, if you guys want to hear this at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask Ms. Wiggins a question and say something? Based on what you just shared with us, if, if we move to deny, then she can come back at a later date. The only thing I'm trying to do is to make sure that we don't have it indefinite out there in terms of a denial. You know, I mean, I'm just trying to fix it. Well, she, I'm not trying to stop her or her project, but I'm just trying to make sure that we doing what we can do legally in terms of deferral. Now, if you can make a suggestion as to what we can do to accommodate that, I would appreciate it. And I would also make move to that motion, but, but right now I thought that that would be the proper thing to do because she could still come back at a later date. I think, I, I think it went six months or so that she can come back or so and reapply again. But I just, just, if you could give me a suggestion as what we can do to, to do this and, and still be helpful to, to the applicant.
So Commissioner Fan, the body could actually make a deferral to our regularly scheduled July meeting.
Right.
And so then that would not be indefinite. I, so there are a couple of things with, I, I agree, I would not want to penalize the applicant in any kind of way who is seeking a deferral. I think that this body can clean that up and we can just make a deferral for a time certain. And that time certain could be will of this body, if it's gonna be at our regularly scheduled July meeting, if it's gonna be at our regularly scheduled August meeting. When, as Attorney Wiggins has mentioned, it, once we do to denial, once we do the denial, then there is a time period that the applicant not come back before this body. And then I also believe that the applicant would have to reapply, so there are cost implications to that as well. So again, I don't think our intent is to penalize the applicant to that extent. I think that we would like to have some structure and clarity around the time for the deferral. And so if that is the case, then if you were to make a motion to defer to our regularly scheduled July meeting or regularly scheduled August meeting and it got a second and that was passed, then those would be the time periods for which we have approved the deferral.
Well, and, and, and with that clarification, Mr. Chair, I would say my motion then will be to defer until our August meeting. And that should give her at least two months to have things along to bring back to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Is there a second to Commissioner Fan's motion to defer this case to our regularly scheduled August meeting?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner McKnight. And now we've got two hands. We've got Director Smith, Ms. Wiggins at that border.
Chairman, I just want to make, make a clarification that if this body chose to deny this case this evening, it would be a recommendation and then the case would move forward to the city council.
That is correct. And that is absolutely correct because it is a special use permit. And Attorney Wiggins, I am recognizing you. Director Smith, if you could please lower your hand. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Attorney Wiggins.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask for the record if.
Okay, we're losing.
Original motion to deny.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now, sir?
You know.
Okay, whoever seconded Ms. Commissioner Fan's initial motion to deny, withdraw that second so he can properly have this new motion.
Yes, I forgot that there was a second. Okay, Commissioner Joseph Fields withdraws. Thank you so much. I forgot that there was a second to that, okay? And so now that that is withdrawn, Commissioner Fan, would you restate your motion regarding a deferral to the regularly scheduled August?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. The, I wanna make a motion that we defer this application until our August meeting.
And Commissioner McKnight, would you please resound for a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Attorney Wiggins, you still have your hand raised. You still like to be recognized. Okay, it looks like she's lowered her hand. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that this body defers case number. Case number two zero two two R as in Robert Z as in zebra dash zero zero one dash zero three, regularly scheduled August meeting. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner McKnight. All in favor, seconded by Commissioner McKnight. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner McKnight, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, this item is deferred to our regular scheduled August meeting. Next agenda item is two zero two two U as an umbrella that's zero zero one. And that's zero four and two zero two two V as in Victor C as in Charles as zero zero one dash zero four. The applicant is Mike Vale. Uh, at Public Storage and the location is two three two nine one two seven one two six one Camp Creek. Um, Steph, would you please sound the caption and your recommendation for this to differ?
Chairman, in reference to item number five, case number two zero two two U dash zero zero one dash zero four. Two zero two two V C dash zero zero one dash zero four. The applicant is Mike Vale, Public Storage, the property is located at thirty two ninety one. Thirty two seventy one and thirty two sixty one Camp Creek Parkway. The applicant seeks a special use permit to expand existing public storage facility. The applicant also seeking a concurrent variance for separation from other self-storage parking uses, parking. And loading case type is a special use permit for the concurrent variance, this case was deferred from the May nineteenth. Two thousand twenty two meeting. Staff has recommended denial.
Okay. Do you want to expound on that, Director Smith?
Um, yes, sir, um, staff has recommended denial of this petition, um, there's not seem to be. Any evidence of topological, uh, topographical issues that would prevent the applicant or owner from. Following the requirements of the ordinance, uh, self-storage multi requirements. As well as section ten dash twenty one fifty four for off-street parking and loading area layout, construction and maintenance.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the recommendation from staff regarding case number two zero two two U as an umbrella. Dash zero zero one dash zero four and the two zero two two V as in Victor C as in Charles as zero zero one dash zero four at this time I entertain a motion.
Motion to accept staff recommendation for denial.
Okay, um, is that a recommendation?
That's a recommendation, that's a recommendation to accept staff.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendation for denial.
Okay, um, there's a motion to recommend denial, um, made by Commissioner Fan, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, this body recommends denial, any comments, questions or concerns?
I do have a question, uh.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph Fields, you are recognized.
Um, I've I've I I kind of understand what they're trying to do, they want to go up three stories from their base. Uh, one-story building. And spread out a little bit uh, within the area that they described to us at the last meeting. I've seen storages. If it goes up three stories, I can understand, I've seen down on a hun- on Sixteenth Street. There's a storage facility similar to what I understand this one might be. And it's five stories and doesn't seem to interfere with anything, you can see it from the. From the expressway coming south on Highway eighty, Interstate eighty. So I don't see how that would interfere with anything by having it built. So I I would recommend that we. We we approve this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fields, Commissioner Joseph Fields, are there any other comments, questions or concerns? Okay, I will speak, um, Ms. Solomon, can you please go back to the slide of the staff's denial? Okay, so, um, staff, I would like to ask you to unpack this a little bit, that is why I was asking for Director Smith to expound on this, so. It says that there does not seem to be any evidence of topographical issues that will prevent the applicant or the owner from following the requirements of the zoning ordinance section ten. So can you speak to the topographical issues that the applicant presented? And why staff saw that that was not an issue? You on mute?
In reference to the topographical issues, I don't have. Any additional comments, um, I might let staff speak on that, but in reference to the section of our zoning ordinance. That has the distance requirements um, for self-storage facilities. Um, this particular area has multiple self-storage facilities in the area. And so for that reason, um, staff would not be able to recommend approval because they were already within. The limit of what would be allowed based on the distance requirements set forth in our zoning ordinance. I'm not sure if, um, Mr. Secretary would like to speak on the topographical issues.
I need, I I do need someone to speak on the topographical issues because it is a part of the recommendation, it's a part of the supporting documentation. Or the reasoning for the recommendation from denial, so if there could be someone from.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Troy Johnson, Secretary speaking, um, so I did the recommendation with all my colleague, Ms. Taylor Solomon. And so based off our, um, review. We did, we did not see any, um, because the applicant was trying to get a variance well for the parking requirements. And that is why, uh, we recommend that A D now simply because we did not see any type of issues. Regarding any trees, um, dirt and that nature that would prevent the applicant. From being in compliance when it comes to the parking islands or the parking requirements, which is why we mentioned. The uh, topographic concerns, but we didn't see any um, thing that would stop that, that says applicants from being in compliance. With the co-stated for the parking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary, um, so I've heard two things, one, Director Smith, you mentioned the proliferation of storage units. Within what, which would then be different from the topographical issues, but that was not a part of. The documentation or the rationale for the denial, but we'll come back to that, so, um, as it relates to the parking. Um, the applicant was requesting a reduction, being correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, now, the applicant was requesting a reduction in parking from what to what?
Um, at this moment, I do not recall the exact number, um, Mr. Brent, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, sir, this is Brett Buckland, um. Uh, representing Bowler and Public Storage, our, uh, located at six five one Caligney Court in Sandy Springs. Um, the requested parking reduction was from a required fifty-three parking spaces. Um, down to a provided twenty-one parking spaces.
And, uh, Mr. Buckland, what is the basis for that request? Staff is stating that there are no topographical issues that would prevent. Public storage from meeting that threshold of fifty-three parking spaces. I am assuming that public storage and your team, uh, would refute that, is that correct?
I would say there are some topographical concerns, there is a twelve to fifteen foot tall retaining wall. Along the, um, eastern property line. Um, but there is also just a space limitation, um, for this property. Um, we have, you know, in order to meet the loading space requirement, um, we have, which we have provided. Um, that limits our ability to meet the parking requirements. Um, and then also, uh, public storage being, um, you know, the largest self-storage provider has. Um, you know, done a market analysis here to determine that the provided parking should be adequate for their. Um, anticipated clientele for this, uh, facility.
Okay, that's public storage is assessment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, unfortunately, public storage is not in the position to make that, um, so we will disregard that, but I appreciate you stating that. Something, um, my mind was just triggered here. I believe, and please correct me if I am incorrect, I believe that Mr. Buckland and Ms. Walker were not present at our. May meeting, is that correct? We deferred this, when we deferred this and had a public hearing. You all did not have an opportunity to present, is that correct? You presented at work session, but I don't believe that you were at the meeting when this item was deferred.
We we were, um, at both.
Did you present?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have. The the images that show that retaining wall and the space limitations and all of that, because I don't recall that being brought up.
We had, we had not discussed that particular aspect, the, um, topographical concerns had not been brought up. At the time because there was no staff report available, um, the staff report was just provided to us within the last couple of days. Um, we did not know that that was a concern, um, of staff.
Okay, so when that was, when you were made aware of that by staff, was there an engagement with staff? About your assessment that there is in fact some topographical issues, or did you just say, okay, thanks?
Uh, we, like I said, I I'm actually out on paternity leave right now, so I'm, um, just kind of jumped in to help this, Sean, you want to go ahead and jump in?
Yes.
Um, yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sure.
I did respond to Ms. Solomon's email that shared the information with the staff's comments. That was just my acknowledgement that we were in receipt of the comments. But it was no way indication to address any comments directly. Um, I thought that we're going to have an opportunity to discuss that today. And again, I had no idea about the flow of this meeting today, I thought we were going to go back to the presentation. And we can reiterate, um, just our expansion, what P S Public Storage is attempting to do. And to answer any questions that you all may have about our operations and how we plan to improve upon this this location. Um, this is, this is a, this is news to me.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker for that, and, um, people will say a lot of things about Sean Atkins, but what they will not say is that. He is not fair, and I believe that your assessment is fair. And or or your concerns are fair, and so I do not recall a conversation about. The topographical issues at this site, okay? And because I don't recall that, um, I have not discussed that, I don't know if any of my fellow commissioners have discussed that. Or know about that, and so we have had the public hearing for this, however, I will give you an opportunity. To present those issues because you're requesting quite a drastic reduction in parking. Staff says that there is no topographical concerns and according to Mr. Buckland. There are, and so I would like to see exactly what the challenges are on the site and why. Public storage is finding it difficult to, um, meet the threshold of the required fifty-three parking spaces. Okay, so at this time, um, I am asking staff to either, um. Allow Ms. Walker or Mr. Buckland the ability to share screen.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay.
So here is the retaining wall that is along our eastern property line. Um, you can see there's approximately, I think, twelve to fifteen feet tall. Um, and so this is a limitation. There, these are some of the existing site photos. Um, the retaining wall is located approximately, um, adjacent to this guardrail right here. And then it drops off down to the adjacent property there. Um. And then there is also a fairly significant topographic drop down in this rear area. Um, as well as back in here towards the existing. Self-storage facility right there.
Okay, um, Mr. Bucklet, thank you for sharing that with me, and this is what I'll say. Um, the photos are lovely, I appreciate it, but what I can't see is I cannot see a site plan. That shows that you're not able to accommodate the parking, okay, um, for those reasons. And is it that you cannot accommodate the parking because you want a larger footprint? Um, so I'm not sure, so if you can walk me through the site plan. And the other thing that I will also say, there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fan and seconded by. Um, laws, who seconded this?
Commissioner Bryant.
Commissioner Bryant seconded, okay, to to recommend denial and, um. There are a couple of other questions that I would have of staff and commissioners, there's a motion to deny, but I'm almost feeling like. This case may need to be deferred, I just would like to hear. Um, that is one of the reasons why I asked staff to expound on the reasoning for denial. Um, and so I would just like to hear that those those reasons, and I don't know if. We're prepared to do that tonight, um, or if staff is prepared or if the applicant is prepared to do that this evening, but. Those are my concerns, I will go with the will of the body, but I did want to state my concern on this because I want staff, first of all. When you're going to present a denial particularly to this body. Um, to simply say that staff recommends denial without giving us any information without being proud of it, I'm going to find that unacceptable. I would like for this body to understand staff's expertise and, um. It's it's educated reasoning behind a denial. Um, and so I'm not sure if. I am satisfied with all of those things this evening, um. I want to be fair to the applicant and I also want to respect staff's opinion on this. And I think that both sides should have an opportunity to present those things, which I do not think that I've heard, and perhaps I'm the only one. But I don't feel comfortable with that. The motion on the floor is to recommend denial, um, if this body should like to move forward with that. Um, we can go ahead and dispose of that motion, if not, then we can entertain another motion. And, um, I would like to also ask. If there's anything that I have not covered, um, if Ms., uh, if Attorney Wiggins could opine. Um, I just want to make sure that we've heard from both sides sufficiently before this body makes, um, takes action.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think you guys have heard from both bodies, my only concern is that. The applicants are presenting new information that the public has not had an opportunity to respond to whether or not. Uh, what you mentioned initially, um, a deferral with a re-advertising of a public hearing. Provided that there is new information, uh, regarding this retain wall and the topography issues. That the public has not been able to opine on.
Okay. All right, so, um, commissioners, you've heard also from Attorney Wiggins. Regarding that and this information regarding the retaining wall and the staff's inability to respond to that. Because it it's new to us, it is clearly new to me. Um, again, a motion is to recommend denial made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. This body would like to move forward with that, I'll call the question, if the body would like to change their motion. I'm happy to entertain that as well, so are there any other comments, questions or concerns?
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Joseph Fields, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, um, I don't think that they actually outlined exactly what. This new structure is going to look like and the various, um. The various scales of the of the project itself. So if they could do that and show where the parking is or where the parking should be. So if there's no topographical reason why they can't provide the fifty-three spaces, I think. Uh, they should provide the fifty-three spaces to be in compliance with the ordinance. Um, I wouldn't want to, uh. Say. Not providing that, that's that's a big drop from fifty-three to twenty-one spaces. As as well as being able to actually service their clientele. Where everybody's going to park when they come there, you're going to ask for, you're asking for a three-story building. So I'm sure the capacity is going to be increasingly, they're going to have to have capacity to serve, to serve that increased business. So I'd like to see that laid out and described and why can't they do that? I saw the pictures, but I don't see that, that hindrance in relationship to the new structure. So I'd like to see something like that and explain, explain it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fields. Any other comments, questions or concerns from the commission? Okay. Mr. Buckland or Ms. Walker, would you like to respond to Commissioner Fields' questions or concerns?
Yes, this is Ms. Walker, representing Public Storage. Again, we'll be more than happy to outline any material that's requested today. We'd appreciate if we had the opportunity to compile that information and respond appropriately to the, to the comments and questions today as well as to the comments posed in the staff report. We did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Also, I see in this.
Commissioner Fields, just one second. I had yielded the floor to Ms. Walker and then I will recognize you. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. So in response to the topographical matters that was posed by staff, and today we were trying to address that. It appears the information we have on the screen may or may not be sufficient for the commissioners' use to be able to respond, but we'll be more than happy to compile additional documentation on traffic generation and/or the hardship that may or may not be created by this plan. So whatever the commissioner's desire is, we'll be happy to address, just if we can get the opportunity to do so. We appreciate it. Brett, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Mr. Buckland?
No, nothing else. Thanks, Sean covered it pretty well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fields, I recognize you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think if we can clarify those intentions and with the, with the better layout of the plan so that we can clearly see why you can't accommodate the 53 parking spaces.
Okay.
Because I know that's essential for an expanded storage unit. You have to have parking. People come in, they have to have some place to work. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Fields. Any other comments, questions or concerns from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to revisit deferring this until the July meeting. Would we need to do a, would we need to do a whole public hearing again with this? How would that work?
Okay, we can advertise for a public hearing because there is new information regarding retaining walls and topographical issues. And so I would want to make sure that we're meeting the statutory requirement, but we're also giving the public an opportunity to come before this body to address their concerns around this new information. So we absolutely can do that. Commissioner Mark Fields, I believe I saw your hand. Is there something that you would also like to say? But first, Commissioner Miller, did I respond to your question adequately?
You responded very adequately, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mark Fields, I think I saw your hand. Is there something that you'd like to say?
Well, it was just answered. My question was, what would it need to be? What would need to happen, you know, as far as another public hearing because of all this new information?
Okay, thank you. So commissioners, at the moment, there is a motion on the floor to recommend denial. That motion was made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. We must first dispose of that motion. And so I can call the question and we can vote that motion up or down. If that motion passes, then this application would still move forward to city council because this body is not the final arbiter. This is a special use permit. If that motion fails, at that time, I can entertain a motion. And if it's the will of the body to defer this to our regularly scheduled July meeting and that gets a second, and then I'll call the question for that, and then we can vote that up or down. So at this time, there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, that this body recommends denial. All in favor, sound aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner, before we move to the motion, if you will, what I'll do is, is in the spirit of fairness, because we definitely want to be fair with everybody, I will definitely withdraw my motion. If the Senate will draw its motion, so we can move to the referral to the, to the August meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Fan.
And I agree, I agree with that, with what Commissioner Fan just said. I agree with that wholeheartedly.
And you withdraw your second, correct?
Right. I withdraw my second.
Commissioners, the motion in the second has been withdrawn. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I rec, Chairman, I move that we defer this particular item to our July meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Joseph Field, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that this body defers this agenda item to our regularly scheduled July meeting. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, this item is deferred to our regularly scheduled July meeting. Commissions will now pull off the table, a motion, I'm going to say a motion to pull off the table, agenda item 2022 via invictor dash 002 dash 03. The address is 874 Cleveland Avenue. Attorney Wiggins, do we need a motion to pull this off the table? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we bring back this item for discussion that was tabled.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we pull from the table for discussion and action. 2022 via invictor dash 002 dash 03 addresses 874 Cleveland Avenue. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, okay. Where we left off, we were working on conditions. Ms. Solomon, have you been able to pull those together? I got a thumbs up. Great. Let's see what this says. Number one, to provide, to provide landscape plan and lighting plan, which shall be approved by staff to show enhanced landscaping around signage. Number two, the building envelope shall include a mixture of the following building materials, masonry, brick and natural stone as resembling rendering provided to staff. And number three, building shall reflect and comply with Article C, Cleveland Overlay District. Commissioners, do you have any additions, edits, comments, questions regarding the conditions? Okay, if there are none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for 2022 via invictor dash 002 dash 03.
Mr. Chair, on the case number 2022 V dash 002 dash 03, I make a motion that we approve with staff conditions as stated.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that this body approves case number 2022 via invictor dash 002 dash 03 with the conditions as stated and provided by staff. And are there any comments, questions or concerns? Hearing on, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the motion carries, the application is approved. Mr. Bucklet? Thank you very much. You're welcome, sir. Okay, now let's go back to announcements. Director Smith, do you have any announcements for the good of the body?
I do not.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, Patricia Lovett here, Commissioner Lovett. Just want to remind everybody that Friday, 5 o'clock is the last day for early voting. So go to your, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lovett. Any other announcements for the good of the body? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Joseph Field, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we adjourn our regularly scheduled June meeting. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, everyone have a wonderful, wonderful June 10th weekend celebration. And we will see you here next week.
Same to you.
Same back time, same back place. All right. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Thank you so much.